Dennis, I'm assuming I can ignore the email that you can't find the link?
I found the link. I found, I, I decided, wait a minute, it's probably in the agenda somewhere.
Thank you.
I went on, went into the CT.org, you know, whatever.
Okay, okay.
I couldn't find an email with it.
Yeah, I sent them out yesterday and they probably should have automatically went out again today.
Yeah, but I, I had.
Yeah, remember, I think it comes from Dave Anderson, so.
That's probably what the problem was. So I was looking for Maria, I was looking for Shell. I didn't see my cellphone.
As soon as Bill gets going, I think we can, there he is.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Shall we start?
Yep. Feel free to call the meeting order.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the zoning Board of Appeals. I would like to introduce by, by name the board members tonight. My name is Bill Piggott. I will be acting chair tonight. We also have Steve Bishkov with us, who's a regular member. And Dennis Crowe, who's a regular member. John Zager, a regular member. Did, did Dylan Stella, who's an alternate, will be acting as a regular member. And with us tonight is Marie Petalola, who's our land use official. Four votes are needed for an application to be approved. In accordance with state statutes, a simple majority is not sufficient. The clerk will read the call of the meeting as advertised in the publication. After the applications have been read, anyone who wishes to withdraw or postpone his or her's application is free to do so. If there is no one who wishes to withdraw or postpone, we will then go forward with the application in the order in which they have been advertised. The clerk will call the application at which time the applicant or his or her representative will come forward and state his or her's name and address for the record and the nature and the reason for the appeal. The applicant should stand where he or she can be seen and all displays can be seen by both the board and audience. Any and all items, plans or pictures shown to the board are considered exhibits and all exhibits must be left with the file. After the presentation is made by the applicant, we will entertain questions from members of the board and then entertain questions from the audience. We will also, after that discussion has taken place, accept presentations or statements either in favor of or in opposition to the particular application. Please be sure to state your name and address the first time you speak and your name any subsequent time you speak. When your application has been heard, we will close the public hearing portion of the application and the board will go into their deliberations with the seated members. You are free to stay, but tempting as it might be, you should not make any further comments, even if you think of something you should have said or wish you had said, but didn't. That would be taken as testimony and according to statute, we are not permitted to take a testimony after the close of the public hearing portion. In most instances, we will make our decision immediately after each hearing. You may stay to hear the result or call the land use office in the morning. You will be notified by mail and all decisions are published. I will now call on Maria Petola, our zoning enforcement, from the zoning enforcement office to read the first application. Marie?
Thank you. Legal notice, Madison Zoning Board of Appeals, Madison, Connecticut. Notice is hereby given that the board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four, at seven PM. The meeting will be conducted remotely as a Zoom online webinar. Attendees may join the webinar through either the webinar link or call in information below. www.zoom.us, webinar ID nine two zero zero two seven zero two one zero three, password three eight 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 one eight, or call in one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Madison Zoning Board of Appeals, twenty-four dash eleven nineteen Parker Avenue, map fifteen lot forty-six, zone R five. Owners Robert E. and Laura Lauren W. McManus. Applicant Cody Construction LLC. Variance request to three point eight B to allow one thousand four hundred forty-eight square feet of coverage where one thousand one hundred ninety-two square feet of coverage is required. Three point eight B to allow three hundred, three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine square feet of floor area where two thousand three hundred twenty square feet is required. Three point nine eight to allow thirty-two point six maximum average building height where thirty feet is required. Three point nine C to allow thirty-eight point eight feet maximum total building height where thirty-five point five is required. Application includes a coastal site plan. Further details, including application materials, are posted on the Town of Madison website, www.madisonct.org, under the calendar link at the meeting. Questions and or comments can be made emailed to the land use office at landuse@madisonct.org up to twenty-four hours in advance of the meeting dated this twenty-third day of July, two thousand twenty-four, Richard Gilbert Chair. This was published twice in the source, once on August first, two thousand twenty-four, and once on August eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Okay.
Okay, we'll have a presentation by the applicant.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Chris McKeon with the law firm of Bernstein Volpe and McKeon. We're located at nine hundred Chapel Street in New Haven. I am also a resident of the town. I live at thirty-one Hotchkiss Lane, which is where I'm talking to you from tonight instead of being at our usual location. I see that I have the rest of my team is here as attendees and I'm wondering, Maria, if you're able to make them be panelists?
Absolutely. Who would you like over? Mr. Parker, Mr. Ott?
Yeah, Mr. Ott, Mr. Parker, Paul Cody, Joe Devola, Robert and Lauren McManus, I are the owners. I think they all can be panelists, whether or not they're going to actually speak. I don't know. I don't think so, but. I can continue while Maria's bringing them in as panelists if, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. So the applicant, Cody Construction LLC, and Paul Cody, who's now here, made this application effectively to build a new home for Melinda Wiswell and Joseph Devola. Melinda's sister currently owns the property, her and her husband. And Melinda's family has a long history of residing at the site. The house that's located on nineteen Parker Avenue was built in nineteen twenty-seven by their great-grandfather, who hailed out of Northampton, Mass., known as Wiswell the Druhest. It was one of two identical guest houses behind the main house that still stands at twenty-three Parker Lane. Melinda's grandmother's parents own the house next door at twenty-five Parker Lane. They spent summers there. Those folks were from St. Louis. Melinda's father was raised here in Madison, a graduate of Daniel Hand High School. He was a Marine and went on to study at UConn. Melinda and her sister, as children, spent all of their summers and holidays at this location with their grandparents, Ray and Gladys Wiswell. Ray was a realtor in town. He was the first president of the Madison Land Conservation Trust. He was active in the Chamber of Commerce and the Exchange Club. He was awarded Conservationist of the Year by the State of Connecticut in nineteen seventy-six, something he was very proud of. Melinda, her sister and her, her sister and her brother-in-law have raised their children in the, the house that's located at nineteen Parker Avenue. They went to Hand High School as well. A history of floods at this particular location, including Melinda and her sister remembering conversations about the hurricane of nineteen thirty-eight. Always find those conversations interesting. And water levels marked at various locations that never were heard from until Irene and Sandy in two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve, which is the, the reason for a lot of the applications that I find myself in front of your board because families like Melinda's want to preserve their memories and their ability to reside in these neighborhoods. And the FEMA regulations coupled with our zoning regulations have not stood the test of time in terms of dealing with real-world situations like this. They, Melinda and Joe and their, their extended family obviously have a long connection to the site and, and that is evident in the fourteen or so letters of support of this application in terms of what they want to do to continue enjoying the site. So with that, let, let's talk about the site itself. It is as is typical in many of the applications I present to, to, to this board, it is a non-conforming lot. It is the lots in the R five zone have to be seven thousand square feet, which is small to begin with. This lot has six, six thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. And like other applications I've been before you on, it has two front yards with two twenty-five foot setbacks. This lot is also located in the AE thirteen flood zone and limited moderate, limit of moderate wave action area imposing additional building construction constraints. Perhaps most importantly, this lot has an average grade of four point nine feet, which is lower than I think any application that I've been before this board on. And it, it results in a remarkable raise of first floor level of nearly nine feet on this particular application. So all of those factors, I would suggest to you make this a unique property and one that constitutes a traditional hardship analysis. But additionally, the proposal to build a new reconstructed and FEMA compliant home carries with it other benefits in, in terms of eliminating non-conformities and reducing a non-conformity. So let me quickly cover those. There are three yard non-conformities. Again, we have two front yards. To the south, the house is low, the existing house is located seventeen point seven feet from the boundary where twenty-five feet is required. To the north, there is a smaller but still existing non-conformity where the house is located twenty-four point six feet from the property boundary where twenty-five feet is required. There is also a side yard setback non-conformity to the east where the existing house is located seven point six feet from the property boundary where a twelve-foot setback is required. The applicants proposing to replace the existing non-conforming and non- FEMA compliant house with a new FEMA compliant home. The reconstructed home will result in an elimination of the three yard non-conformities that I just listed for you. Additionally, the, the lot and, and the current house represents a building coverage non-conformity. The current coverage is sixteen hundred and thirty-three square feet where eleven hundred and ninety-two feet is required. The proposed newly constructed home would cover fourteen hundred and forty-eight square feet, reducing the current building coverage by a hundred and eighty-five square feet. Again, important, but not necessarily a zoning non-conformity or a zoning issue is the fact that the existing home is a seven-bedroom home. And from public health code purposes, that is significant when the proposed reconstructed home will only have three bedrooms, which presents a much less septic demand or requirements. So the end result that we're seeking to get here with a newly constructed home will be obviously a FEMA compliant home, one with a new state-of-the-art septic system accommodating a three rather than seven-bedroom home. It will eliminate the three-yard non-conformities and it will substantially reduce the building coverage non-conformity. So in order to get there, we need variances, which is the reason we're before you. And those variances, there's four of them, which may seem striking at first, but remember, one of them is for building coverage because we're reducing it by a hundred and eighty-five square feet, but we're not bringing it into compliance. So we still need the variance to allow for the fourteen hundred and forty-eight square feet of building coverage, again, an improvement by a hundred and eighty-five square feet. The other one, and at the risk of sounding like a broken record to you, i- is, is a floor area variance because as, as I've indicated to you in the past, when we raised these homes, the floor area, excuse me, the first floor to the height required by FEMA, we're left with this area below the first floor that, quite frankly, our regulations don't treat kindly or favorably. In this particular application, our architect, John Parker, who is here, myself, Paul Cody, Mike Ott, Maria Petola, the zoning enforcement officer, and Aaron Mannix sat and reviewed this plan and looked at the regulations as they apply to this particular house that, that the applicants want to construct. And it is by no means an enormous house or a significantly larger house than what is there and what is consistent in the neighborhood. But in order to characterize any area that is enclosed below the first floor, you have to realize that floor area, which I personally think is unfair and needs to be rewritten. And, and I think that the town staff would agree, agree with me in some respects. The, the trick with that is doing it correctly so we don't get results we don't want. So now we're left with, with coming before your board and asking for the variances. So in this particular instance, we have a floor area that we're seeking to have approved by way of a variance for thirty-eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet where the existing home has a floor area of twenty-nine hundred and twenty-six square feet and only twenty-three hundred and twenty is allowed. Now, I, I think floor area as a, as a measure of density and zoning is, is something we probably could do without in our regulations, given that we have yard requirements and we have coverage requirements and most all development in, in our beach area and throughout the town is really dictated by septic and soil test results. But be that as it may, the third, the thirty-eight hundred and eighty-nine square feet of floor area is an increase of almost the exact amount of floor area that is being recognized below the first floor and has to be treated as either garage or basement under our regulations. Even though there, it's not living area because FEMA won't allow it to be living, living area, still counts as floor area under our regulations. So we're seeking a variance for the maximum floor area that's permitted because of that reason. The remaining two variances deal with height. As you know, we have a, a total height limitation and then we have an average height calculation that in the particular zone, for average height, it's thirty feet and for to, maximum total height, it's thirty-seven and a half feet. Here, as I've indicated before, we have an average grade of four point nine feet, requiring a nine-foot raise. Again, I think that's striking because I don't think I've seen one that high to get to the FEMA compliant level. So those factors are requiring what I still consider to be a modest home, a two-story home with, with space to be utilized on, on the third floor. But if this house were not needing to be raised nine feet, it would be well below the required height levels. So I also want to, to call to your attention the language that I've, I've, I've pointed out before, which is from the two thousand sixteen Madison Coastal Resiliency Plan, which at page twenty, specifically says that assisting homeowners with elevating their residences should also be a continuing focus of the town. Madison should enact a suite of regulatory changes to support resiliency efforts, including making height restrictions flexible in the case of home elevations. If this house were to be just raised to FEMA level, there would still be a need for a floor area variance, although not necessarily a height variance. But because we're making the other improvements in terms of adhering to the yard requirements, reducing building coverage, we need the variance of both height and the average height and maximum total height. Specifically as to average height, we're requesting a variance to allow thirty-two point six feet of average height where thirty is required. And for total height, we're asking for thirty-eight point eight feet where thirty-seven and a half feet is allowed. I have submitted my, my usual standard letter that contains the, the legal references about non-conforming uses and the ability to continue their use. Here, obviously, as in past cases, we're, we're not seeking to continue the non-conforming use. We're, we're seeking to get variances approved to replace the non-conforming structure with something better, more conforming to the regulations, conforming to FEMA, new septic system, less bedrooms, so less septic demand. I also set forth in my letter the, the law relative to eliminating non-conformities and reducing non-conformities as being a legal justification to allow you the discretion to grant the variances we've requested. And I, I've, I've also made the point, as I did earlier tonight, that this particular site, giving the characteristics that it has, in my opinion, satisfies the traditional hardship requirement. So for all of those reasons, we're, we're seeking the approval of the four variances as set forth in the application. I think the points that I just made were largely set forth in the application in the answers that I, the response, if you will, that I had drafted to section eight of the application. And we're also seeking approval of our coastal site plan application, which today, in, in typical fashion, we received this, our response from DEEP agreeing that it, our proposed application is consistent with the goals and policies of the Coastal Management Act with the, the, the usual and standard conditions of having appropriate erosion and sediment control in place. So from DEEP's standpoint, it seems to, to be on board with the approval of the coastal site plan as well. So with that, I'm happy to, to, to turn over the, the microphone to the architect to go through the, the design of the home and then Mike Ott, who is the civil engineer, laid out the site plan and Mr. Cody, who is here, who can also speak to the construction methods that are employed here to seek the least possible relief in terms of height that we could, including there being eight-foot ceilings and the roof rafters being resting on top of the, the top plate of the framing, all to bring the, the height down as much as possible so that we were coming before you, asking for the least possible relief. So with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Parker. You're muted, John.
I have to say that I do, do not have the ability to share my drawings.
No problem. I can do it.
with the 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 usual and standard conditions of having appropriate erosion and sediment control in place. Um, so, uh, from Deep's standpoint, uh, it seems to, uh, uh, to be on board with the approval of the coastal site plan as well. So with that, I'm happy to 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 turn over the, uh, the the microphone to, um, the architect. Um, um, to go through the the design of the home and then, um, Mike Ott, who is the civil engineer, laid out the site plan. And Mr. Cody, who is here, uh, who can also speak to, um, the construction methods that are employed here to seek the least possible re- relief in terms of height that we could, including there being eight-foot ceilings and the roof rafters being resting, uh, on top of the the top plate of the framing, um, all to bring the the height down as much as possible. Um, so that we were coming before you, asking for the least possible relief. So with that, I would turn it over to Mr. Parker. You're muted, John.
I, um, have to say that I do do not have the ability to share my drawings.
I can do it.
Okay. Okay, on this sheet, we're showing the foundation plan or and the ground floor plan on the right, and on the left is the first floor plan. Uh, you can see on the on the right, there are several concrete piers with breakaway panels in between the piers and then breakaway panels for walls, uh, interior to the to the plan. On the lower left of the, um, first, uh, ground floor plan, there's an open courtyard, uh, an outdoor shower, it's a stairway up uh, to the first floor. There is a garage on the left end of the main body of the house, a storage area in the middle, and a covered patio on the right end of the main body of the house. The, there is a stairway on the, on the upper part of the drawing, which leads to the front door. On the drawing on the left, we have, uh, our first floor plan with a kitchen, living area and dining area, uh, some support areas along the top with a, an elevator and a stair that wraps around it to go to the second floor. On the lower left, we have an entry foyer, a mechanical room, and a mechanical porch for outdoor equipment. So let's go to the next drawing, please. Here we have the second floor plan on the right and an attic plan on the left. There are there are two bedrooms on this level. And, um, I thought, uh, thought we had three bedrooms, but that's, we really just have two bedrooms. On the right is the the stairway goes up to the third, to the attic floor and most of the, um, of that area will be unusable except for a small exercise room on the right lower side. Now, next drawing, please. These are cross-sections through the house, and the one on the right shows how we, uh, calculated our our building heights. And to reiterate what Chris said, we're having to raise this house almost nine feet, and we're still within almost two feet of complying with, uh, with FEMA, with with zoning requirements. Next drawing, please. On the, uh, on the left here is the south elevation which faces Parker Lane. You can see a garage door on the left, storage area door in the middle, and then an open patio on the right. The little dormer on the top is is for the exercise room. Uh, the drawing on on the right is the west elevation, which shows the stairway up to the main entrance. On the, on the right side of that drawing, you can see the balcony that we're creating for our outdoor mechanical equipment. Next drawing. So these elevations are from the other side. The drawing on the left shows the front elevation facing Parker Avenue. And the drawing uh, on the right, shows the east elevation with the open patio on the bottom floor. And that's about all I have, unless someone has questions.
Dennis, do you have a question? You have your hand raised.
Um, it it was in in reference to, uh, Attorney McCann's uh, statement, so if you want to
Okay.
The questions regarding this first, I'll get to that.
Okay.
I have a question, I guess. So in your architect design, how much of the bottom floor is counted in the floor, total floor space?
Uh, everything but the, um,
I want the number. Is it seven hundred fifty feet, a thousand square feet? How many square feet?
Excuse me, can I, can I interject? This is Paul Cody, Cody Construction, Twenty-Eighth Patrick Drive, Killiworth, Connecticut. Um, the number under the house you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Nine oh four point five square feet.
Thank you. That's that's the question I had. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Which if you subtract that from our overall square footage of max floor area, it puts us literally at the same amount as the current house.
Well, can you speak to the bedroom count? Um, I had indicated there was a three-bedroom.
Yeah, I think, I think the intent was that we knew when the plan would be reviewed by the town that they would call at least the sitting room or something, another bedroom. So, um, we just went ahead. Uh, the client said they only want two bedrooms. They don't want too many guests, so they only wanted two bedrooms, so, um, uh, but I, they would, you know, the health department would definitely call one of them a bedroom. So that's why we've reduced to three instead of two. But arguably, arguably, it could be two, but not worth the argument. Okay. Um, a couple of things I I might add. Should I add a few?
Sure.
Dimensional. So we were discussing, um, the max height of the building. If we were at normal grade, um, which is typically, and you know, most houses I build about the finished floor is about two feet above finished grade generally. Um, this house, the max height, we would be eight feet under the thirty-seven and a half foot, um, allowance. And with the average grade, um, at a typical grade, we would be five and a half feet under what's allowed in the zoning regulation. So the intent, um, with this application through a lot of hard work from John Parker, Mike Ott, Chris, myself, clients, was to put together something that was, you know, responsible and and, you know, good. You know, in moving it, we improve all the side yards. We we actually are within the building envelope. Um, we've made, um, coverage reductions, which, you know, obviously, we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get, make the best proposal for the property, um, for with regard to regulations, with regard to the client's needs, and, you know, what's allowed.
I I would only add to that, the, uh, the fact that, um, the letters of support uh, from all of the immediate neighbors and others in the the more expanded neighborhood, uh, I I I think are unanimously in support. They they were shown these plans, um, and many of the letters of support indicate that they, you know, had seen and reviewed these plans uh, and are in support.
Thirteen letters, I'm sure, did, I'm sure they were shared with you.
Okay.
And Maria, I believe there were not, not, no, nothing negative?
No, outside of the ones we got from you, we didn't receive any phone calls, no emails, no additional mails.
So the community has definitely spoken in a, in approval.
Do we want to have Mike show the site plan or go through the site plan? I know it's on file on part of the record, but.
Um, anybody with, anybody interested in the site plan or?
Yes, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Um, good evening.
I'm saying, before before we do that, I want to get back to my question, though, because, um, hey, I I didn't want to interrupt Attorney McCann, but, um, he he stated that he had sent a letter in, and I don't believe I've seen that letter.
Yeah, I I just summarized my my letter that I went through for you, so I didn't, I I'm submitting the letter. If we were in the room, I would have handed you the letter and I would have summarized it, which is normally what I do. So I I've covered everything I put in my letter. I just need to make it a part of the record, that's all.
Okay.
Yeah, you didn't miss anything. I apologize for confusing you.
Okay.
Um, uh, good evening. Just for the record, I'm I'm Mike Ott. I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor with Summer Hill Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors here in Madison at, uh, sixty Wall Street. Um, Maria, may I, may I share my screen?
Yes, you may.
Okay, um, can the, can the board see my screen now?
Yes.
So, um, not a, um, uh, not a lot to to tell you here, but hopefully you got to see this, um, in your packets, um, and I'll zoom in as as much as I can. Um, I should, I should tell you, um, let me, let me actually zoom back out for a second. And I should, um, show you that there is a, um, you probably saw this, the board members, that there's a zoning standard schedule, um, on the sheet and and all the the, um, information in the schedule should match, um, the information in the application form or on the application form. Um, and then to go, I'll zoom in as tight as I can on the lot itself. So hopefully it'll be easy for you all to see on the screen. Um, the existing home, if you can, the existing structure, the existing residence, if you can see it, is is, um, indicated by this, the edges of the structure are indicated by these angled lines. If that, if that makes sense to the board members, if you follow them around, it it indicates the limits of the existing structure. For instance, this is the easterly uh, wall of the of the existing building. And then we we showed the proposed structure in red to try to make it easier uh, for the board to see the difference. Um, hopefully that showed up on paper. Well, there's a slight, uh, light gray poche or or hatch within the limits of the new residents also. So, um, you should be able to see if you, if you have this, if you can see it on the screen well enough, or you have your paper copy in front of you, you should be able to see the um, dimensions from the property boundaries to the existing structure. They're they're indicated in in smaller, um, oblique or italicized text. For instance, this right, this, um, easterly, northeasterly front corner, as Attorney McCann said earlier, is twenty, uh, the existing structure is twenty-four point six feet to the property boundary. And you can see here that the new, um, residents will be, um, compliant at twenty-five feet from the property boundary. And that, those dimensions apply all the way around from all property boundaries. The smaller text that's italicized is to the existing structure, and the larger text that is not italicized are the dimensions to the, um, to the proposed new residence. Um, so it's, it, if if you can see it clearly, and I, and I hope you can, um, it's, it's pretty easy to see as you make your way around the structure, um, uh, where the existing structure is not compliant and where we are making improvements and bringing, um, the new structure into compliance as as, um, Attorney McCann had listed for you in his presentation. Um, one, I guess, in unless there's any questions on that, the only other thing I'd like to say is, um, to add to the height, um, um, the proposed height of the residence, because as Attorney McCann said, and there's, there's a note on the plan, um, it should be note number nine, if you can, if you can read it, the the parcel is entirely within a special flood hazard area zone with a base flood of elevation thirteen. A- and as Attorney McCann said, it's also within the limit of moderate wave action, which makes it a coastal um, AE zone, which means that that the construction requirements are the same as if the house was located in a V-zone or or what's called a coastal high hazard area, and that, that actually adds, um, at least another foot to the height of the house. Because in a, in a coastal zone, as well as in a V-zone, the reference level is no longer the first floor of the home, it is the bottom of the lowest supporting horizontal structural member of the residence. So rather than, so, um, state building code, um, FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program regs, and the Town and Madison Flood Plane Management Ordinance all require that in a, in a normal A-zone, um, that the first floor or the lowest floor um, be one foot above the base flood elevation. So in this case, with a base flood elevation of fourteen, of thirteen, I'm sorry, the floor would only have to be fourteen, but because we're in a coastal zone, the bottom, rather than the top of the first floor, the bottom of the lowest structural member has to be one foot above the base flood elevation. So if you look at, um, John Parker, the architect's drawings, you you will see that in one of his elevations, I believe it's, it might be on page four. I believe you will see that he has called out the bottom of the structural member to be at fourteen. And and that, of course, drives the floor up higher and drives the height of the house up a bit higher. So that's the, that's the only other thing I I wanted to add, um, and I'd I'd be glad to answer any questions if the board hasn't.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay, we could move on.
Thank you.
So I I too am available to answer any questions, as is Mr. Parker and Mr. Ott and Mr. Cody, uh, a- and the applicants who are here as well, if there are any questions from the board.
Okay, we'll move on to initial questions by the board. Um, if anybody wants to speak up, please, uh, do now.
Yeah, um, we, I I think we we pretty much covered what was in the application. Um, you're also got a, um, coastal site plan application as well, right?
Correct.
Um, so I, you know, if there are other questions regarding the basic application, that we are left to go first, but I just wanted to get that out so that we get it covered.
Steve, any, any questions?
I'm good. I mean, I I just wanted that one question that Paul answered, and, uh, I mean, this is, we've seen this kind of application numerous times, so.
John?
No questions.
Dylan?
Uh, no, I I might have any.
Okay. And I don't have any either, so let's, uh, move forward. And, um, we're at the stage of the hearing where we will accept, uh, public comments from anyone w- wishing to speak in favor of the application.
You want to cover the coastal site plan app first or not?
Oh, we could. Yeah, if you want to cover that. Chris, you want to cover that?
Public comment.
Um, eh, Mike, do you want to briefly run through your coastal site plan application? Maria probably can bring it up if you need to.
Um, I, I can. I think it's, it's, um, rather straightforward. You know, we're, you know, we're located as we, as I was just explaining and Attorney McCann had explained, we're located in a, in a coastal hazard area, meaning the, you know, the flood, special flood hazard area zone. Um, we are about a hundred and fifty feet from high tide to the south, approximately a hundred and fifty feet to the, um, to the, uh, high tide line on the beach. So we're not, we're pretty far setback from the beach. We're also quite a distance from the nearest tidal wetlands, which would be on the, on the north side of the house to the north of Parker Avenue, um, north and northwest, I guess it would be, um, to tidal wetlands. So those are, those are really the closest coastal resources. We're, we're in the special flood hazard area zone and a, a good a hundred and fifty feet from the beach and probably a hundred and fifty plus from, um, from tidal wetlands. Um, so those are the, those are the coastal resources on and in the vicinity, um, of the parcel.
Yeah, we get that, um, application back up on the screen. I just want to flip through it, make sure we've covered. Okay, so site plans, project information, got the variance application. Uh, sound, single family residential, yep, okay. Um, and in square feet, not disturb acres of land, ahead. Um, demolition, rebuild, elevated for FEMA, land play management. Roof water directed to subsurface infiltration, park area, be gravel surface. Okay, so permeable. And get all these onsite, offsite, the adjacent. All right, um, coastal waters, we know that. The tidal wetlands. Right? Consistency regarding the coastal resources, identified for three, linked to potential adverse impacts. Yeah, okay. General development. System coastal use, yep. No, this is not applicable. This, no mitigation, no adverse, and signed by Cody, that, uh, I was going to think that was a doctor there, but that's Michael Ott. Had to be a doctor, I thought, because of the signature.
I was going to be a doctor at one point.
Okay, um, and, okay. So. All right.
Okay, we all set with that then?
Satisfies me that we've, that we've covered the material. And, you know, we, we've at least recognized that it's there.
Okay, good.
And you did, you did see the, uh, you did see the, the DEEP response as well? Was that, did that work its way to the board? Cause it, it came in today, that's the only reason.
Came in late today. It's, it was uploaded. I'm not sure if Michelle had emailed it out to anybody.
Okay, I haven't seen it. If you want to bring it up, that'd be great.
I can bring up the DEP, yeah, their comments.
That would be perfect. It was in the, it was in the folder. Elevated conform. Yep, okay. And we marked it down, but you're not apps. Not apps. The one general development applies, okay, no, no big deal. No adverse, issues of concern, with marked summary and recommendations, all right. Uh, posed, mostly, posed, seeks a variance. Okay, one, ensure installment, uh, installation, maintenance, appropriate solar erosion, some control measures during the planned period. Deviation meets FEMA AE, rent CZL thirteen zone standards, or flood management standards. Anymore?
Nope. Nope.
Okay. Well, doesn't sound like they're restricting you very much, the thing you'd planned on. Right.
Okay, I'd like to go back, um, to the public comments from anyone, uh, w- 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 wishing to speak in favor of the application. If there are people, please state your name and address.
There is no one online attending.
Okay, thank you, Marie. Are there any public comments from anyone w- wishing to speak opposing to the application?
There is still no one online attending.
Okay, so there's no one, Marie?
There is no one attending. We're all here in the room together.
Okay. Further questions from the board?
Uh, just one, uh, you noticed, uh, I'm sure this is administrative oversight, or I, I'm not sure how that works, but, uh, there were two letters signed by the Duquesnes referring to an application on nineteen Parker Lane. I, is that the same as nineteen Parker Avenue? I'm new to Madison, so.
It, it's actually not. Um, there is a Parker Lane and a Parker Avenue, um, uh, the Duquesnes, I, uh, they're, they're part of an LLC that owns Parker Lane. Uh, I think it's eleven and nineteen. I, I had the, uh, the GIS map up earlier today. Um, so Parker Lane, um, eleven Parker Lane and fifteen Parker Lane, um, that is, that is the road closer to the water, so from south. Um, that's owned by Madison Investment Properties LLC, of, of which the, the Duquesne's um, letters come from. So that, that's eleven and fifteen Parker Lane. There are also letters from the, the neighboring property owner to them, nineteen Parker Lane. Uh, Mr. Lucy, uh, owns that property. And then, uh, a letter from Mr. Rosenbaum, uh, was twenty-three Parker Lane, uh, as well as the two properties on either the east or west side of the subject parcel. There are letters in support from, as well as those across the Parker Avenue in support, and then several from Flower, um, uh, um, Avenue as well.
Those are our two road frontages.
Right, Parker Lane and Parker Avenue, the property is between the two, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying, clarifying that.
It's okay.
Okay, any further questions from the board?
I have none.
If there are none, um, I'll ask if there's any correspondence received into the record by name and date. Okay, if there's none, do I have a motion to close the, 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 uh, public, oh, I'm sorry. Any final comments from the applicant?
No, sir.
Any final comments from the public? None. Uh, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing and to, to deliberate the application? At this point, there could be no more, uh, communication with the applicant or public.
So moved.
Second. Okay, who would like to start first?
I guess I can, um, this seems like one, as, um, I think Steve mentioned it, is that we've had, we've seen a number of these before, where people are basically, uh, um, tearing a house down and raising it to meet FEMA. And while they, uh, do reduce some conformity, non-conformities, they incur another one, just, or, or two, in this case, well, it's the height, couple of height items in the floor area, and, and that's almost just imposed by the very nature of meeting the FEMA requirements. So, um, by virtue of reducing the other non-conformities, I, I think we have two good reasons right there to, uh, you know, the FEMA requirements and the, the reduction in non-conformities, two good reasons right there to just say, yeah, this is a good plan.
Steve?
Yeah, I mean, again, we've seen a number of these cases. I think, you know, one of the important factors to look into is to make sure that the size of the new house, when you subtract out the basement, is approximately same size as the other one. That seems to be the case in this thing. It's a few feet larger, but I'm not, I'm gonna go on that. I was a little concerned with the height restriction, but given that the they have to raise it, I think it's nine feet, nine inches or something like that to get to the level. And I think because of getting that FEMA qualified, I can overlook that too, and I'm in favor of approving this application.
John?
Uh, I, I, I took a look at the, the site and, uh, there is, uh, a nu- number of houses, uh, uh, around the current house that have been, uh, uh, increased in, in height according to FEMA regulations, and they're all, you know, uh, much higher than the smaller original homes there, of course, and uh, it's just, uh, as Dennis mentioned, uh, requirement of FEMA to increase, uh, the height, uh, structures, uh, which seems logical in this particular instance, so I would be in favor of, uh, moving forward.
Dylan?
Um, yeah, so I agree with, with, with what, with what was said so far. Um, I think the applicants made a compelling, uh, case that there is indeed a legal hardship, um, for several reasons, including, you know, the two front yards, the average grade level, and of course, the FEMA, uh, uh, requirements. Um, and also, e- e- especially with the reduction of non-conformities and to the fact that you know, it seems like it has widespread community support, I would be inclined to support the variance.
I guess I'm last.
I would agree. I think you have a unique hardship.
I would agree. I think you have a unique hardship due, du- due to the uh, characteristics and the topography of the lot. The only thing I'll say about the, um, reduction of non-conformities is that when you look at the reduction of non-conformities and the v- v- versus the increase in the variances, you always look for a net reduction. And I think in this case, yes, eliminated three non-conformities and did reduce a variance, but you
Am I the only one that lost, Bill?
Yeah, no. I lost.
I think the increase in the variance is kind of offset what you have reduced here.
Here.
And I just want to make that as a comment.
Yeah.
And, uh, but I agree, and I would support the application. Um, because it's a unique situation with the property and the t- t- topography of the land.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I, I agree with you. Is, is the building height one? Um, that bothered me a little bit that it was, you know, it was a thirteen feet, just about over the, uh, existing uh, or the r- required maximum, but given that the, um, requirement was to raise it nine feet from the, uh, average grade. And then on top of that, the, the FEMA requirement to the, take it from the bottom of the supporting structure as opposed to the top of the floor. Um, that, that kicks you up there again, and then the other, the other side of it, you know, that, that leaves, that leaves you, uh, some dif- some distance there that wouldn't be, it still wouldn't be matching. It's almost thirteen feet versus nine plus one is ten, okay, so ten feet. Um, eh, but the reduction of conformities there seems to mitigate or militate towards granting it, let them, you know, get, get the, uh, um, eh, the, the variance for that proved as a, uh, suitable hardship type of situation.
Any other comments from the board? No. Okay, I need a motion to, uh, I need a motion to close the deliberation and request a motion to vote. Would somebody like to, uh, on the board, make that motion or to grant?
Um, I, I, I move that we close the deliberations, return to the, uh, normal meeting, if, for vote.
I'll have a second.
Second.
Okay. Okay. I guess we're at the point to request a motion to vote. So is there a board member that, that would like to make a motion to grant or grant with conditions? Or deny and state the reasons on the basis of?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dennis.
I move that we approve application twenty-four dash eleven for nineteen Parker Avenue, um, for variances, three, uh, requested of, uh, against three point eight B to allow one thousand four hundred forty-eight square feet of coverage, where eleven, the one thousand one hundred ninety-two square foot is required. And three point eight B to allow three thousand eight hundred eighty-nine square feet of floor area, where two thousand three hundred and twenty square feet is required. Three point nine A to allow thirty-two point six feet maximum average building height, where thirty foot is required. And three point nine C to allow thirty-eight point eight feet maximum total building height, where thirty-five point five is required. And, um, it's contingent upon the, uh, um, construction of the project as stated in the plans presented tonight.
State what the hardship is, uh?
Oh, yes, based on the, based on the two hardships there. One is, one is that there's a, uh, a FEMA requirement which requires them to put in a, um, uh, uh, an elevation at nine feet. And in fact, bringing it up to ten feet or so, counting the, uh, going to the bottom of the structure. And which also, by the way, precludes them from using the added square foot of, in the basement area as living area. The second, uh, hardship is, uh, the standard reduction of non-conform, other non-conformities. So there are two hardships.
Okay. And then we have to say, in addition, all construction must be in compliance to the plans submitted upon acceptance of conditions approved from planning and zoning. And do you want to also approve the coastal site plan at this point?
Um, we could, we could have a separate vote on that. I'll just get this one done first, then we'll do that one second.
All right, um, all those in favor of the of accepting the, uh, of accepting the, uh, vo- vote, please say aye or?
Aye.
Aye. All those not in favor? Okay, vote passes and, and congratulations.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the coastal site plan for uh attached to application twenty four dash eleven for nineteen Parker Avenue.
I'll second it.
It's compliant with the coastal site management plan.
I'll second. All those in favor of the the coastal site plan? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Good, good job, gentlemen, Attorney McCown.
Very good.
Thank you. Have a have a good evening.
Yeah, you do well in front, you do well in front of us, Attorney McCown. We we're we're happy to have you here, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Bye bye.
All right.
Uh we have to vote on the minutes from the last meeting, Marie.
Yes, could we have the record who seconded that?
I'm sorry.
Who's who's seconded the motion? I think um.
On the coastal site plan?
Yeah, build it, okay. No, not for the the coastal site plan, for the application itself.
The original application? I thought Steve did.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Steve did.
Thank you. Thank you. And you only have one set of minutes, right, to vote on?
Okay, so you do read the minutes or do we just approve it?
Well, i- did everybody read them? Did anybody have any?
I I did not have.
Questions, changes, comments?
No, no comments. I saw them, didn't.
Okay, uh then let's vote on approval of the minutes. Do we all approve? Aye?
Do we want to make an emotion?
Okay, I make a motion that we vote. On the acceptance.
You're 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 you gotta ask her a motion in a second. I'll make the motion, approve the minutes from the. July, what was that meeting? Um. Was that sixteenth? Was that ten, the ninth?
It's July, it was July ninth, July ninth meeting? June eleventh. Oh, oh geez, June eleventh, we didn't have a July meeting? No.
That's what I said, June eleventh meeting, yes.
Thanks, Raquel.
But I do. Okay, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Call for a move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed?
I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't vote.
Okay. If there's no other business, I make a motion to adjourn. Second. Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. This this was a good night.